It's three o'clock. We'll start the Beltrami County work session. And first item is introduction of new employees. Do we have any new employees? Does not look like it. So we'll move on to identify future work meeting topics. Have anybody have any future work meeting topics? Commissioner Sumner?
Mr. Chair, maybe an update from our lobbyist down in St. Paul. Sometime whenever the
When they officially get done? That's a that'd be a good idea. Thank you, Commissioner Sumner. Anybody else? Not seen any. And I had one, but it slipped my mind. So I'll have to come back to it if I think of it. All right. Minnesota Department of Corrections Department update. I think Tricia is gonna give us an update.
So, good afternoon. I'm Trish Hansen with Department of Corrections and I'm with the Field Services Division, which I want to make sure is not confused with inspections and enforcement that you feel so fondly like to deal with. So my primary tasks are around probation supervised release for Beltrami and Clearwater Counties. And so I, oh, great. I put a packet together for you all to look through and I'll kind of burn through the stats really quickly. If you, any of you want more specifics, my phone number and email is at the end and I'd be happy to sit down and talk through it more thoroughly if you'd like to. So the next slide. Or can I click it? Thank you. There we go. So this slide represents, we have two primary tasks at the Department of Corrections and that's investigations and supervision. So when we talk about investigations, it's usually our pre-sentence investigation reports or what we would call a predispositional report for a juvenile. And those reports take roughly six to eight hours for our staff to put together. And then we also have Minnesota sentencing guidelines worksheets that are completed on all adult felony level matters. And those can be quite complicated depending on criminal history for individuals. And we also do bail studies as directed by state court administration and that's a statutory obligation as well. And then when we talk about supervision, it's probation. And then we also have supervised release or what we most commonly refer to as parole. And we also offer pre-trial supervision in domestic violence cases and then other cases that the court might assign randomly to us as well. And so not to get too far into the weeds, but this is all the data on our investigation functions. So if you look at the top left slide, those are all of the pre-sentence investigations that we did in each of those years. The dark blue is our felony PSIs. The green is our misdemeanor gross misdemeanor DWI's. So most of those are going to be domestic related offenses. And then you'll see that small kind of grayish spot and those are PSIs that we did in conjunction with a felony or a gross misdemeanor. So we call them tracking. You'll see the bail studies on the right. And if you go to the far right column in 2004, the bail study process changed a bit. And so that's why you'll see that addition of that light blue color. And that was called the MinPATR, which is the Minnesota Pre-Trial Assessment Tool Revised. And state court administration changed a little bit about how we did bail studies. And so that's why you'll see that difference there. You'll also note that when we talk about juveniles on the bottom left, we don't do a whole lot of predispositional reports. And part of that is we have a good relationship with the Beltrami Area Service Collaborative. And they do what we call some conferencing kinds of things where families come together and come up with a solution to the problem. And then that's presented to the court in lieu of that. So that's been a great process too and better outcomes, I might add. And then the bottom right are the pre plea worksheets that we talked about. And so what I would note is those worksheets are worksheets that we did prior to anybody entering a plea for their offense. And so then we would redo those worksheets for all of those PSIs in the top left felonies. Because that's when they come to sentencing after they've pled. And what they plead to might have changed since we did the worksheet. So those would be duplicates in almost all of those cases.
Commissioner Gray also another question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trish, sorry to interrupt. I just
It's fine.
noticing kind of a trend here that looks like a good trend. If 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 the least or if, how do I want to say this? If you're doing less of these, that must mean there's less crime. Is that true or not true?
Well, I would defer to law enforcement in terms of how much crime they're seeing because this is only what's been sentenced in the court. So there could be a whole nother group of offenses out there that we're not seeing yet. I haven't made it to my office yet. Yeah. So I'd have to probably defer to law enforcement on that one.
Can also buy Bob down in court system that slow down on the case.
And and to that point, I would say that if you look at 2023, you'll see that spike in felony PSIs. My assumption, and I'm looking at Mr. Hanson, is that that's likely when we were trying to get out of the backlog of COVID. And so you saw everybody trying to shuffle through all of those cases. Is that fair to say?
Thank you.
Yep. So now, if we talk about clients under supervision, this is the supervision portion of the work that we do. And on on the left with all the number graphs, that's your hard data. And then the graphs or the pictures are the ones in the top right there, of course. But when you look at this, this is clients, not cases. So this is the total number of clients open to my office on January 1st of each of those years. So it's a point in time count. And then the other thing you'll notice is on the bottom right, you'll see it says special supervision Bemidji Office, Beltrami County. And we also have what's called an intensive supervised release unit. You might hear it referred to as ISR. And those individuals are supervised by a team of agents that work 24/7. Because those are our highest risk individuals coming out of Minnesota Correction Facility or prison. So they are under intensive supervised release. And if you look at that five-year average, on average, we roughly have just a little over 1,000 clients under supervision for that time period. And now compare that to cases. This is the number of cases we supervised. So over the course of that same five-year average, we had just under 1,500 cases that we supervised for a little over 1,000 individuals. So just to give you a quick snapshot of that. If you look at the adult offenses, drug offenses are what we have the highest volume of. Followed by domestic assaults, DWI's, and then general assaults. So those would not be household or family member assaults. And then at the lowest there, our fifth top highest is criminal sexual conduct. And if you look in the graph to the left, those are the raw numbers. So you can see the actual numbers that we're talking about.
Trish?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt there. You've got drugs and DWI. And my understanding is a lot of the DWI's are actually drug DWI's?
Yes.
Is that, is that separating those or the drug, the DWI's are drug DWI's for the most part? So it's a lot of drugs is the problem.
Correct. Yep. So if you look at those drug cases, the codes that we use, those would be controlled substance crimes first through fifth degree roughly composes the bulk of that drug category. And then if your DWI was drug related, it would still be reflected in the DWI numbers.
Thank you.
Good question. And then the juvenile offenses are at the bottom. And so what's interesting always to me is we don't see any drug offenses for the juveniles, which is interesting. And that's generally been the case even when I was a juvenile agent way back. We rarely saw controlled substance one through five in the juvenile world. Doesn't mean that we didn't see those kids testing positive. But we're not seeing them possess in the ways that the adults were. And so their highest category is assaults. A lot of those, I would bet my last dollar occur in the school settings typically. We have criminal sexual conduct followed by some property damage, disorderly conducts and some domestic assaults. So it kind of gives you a picture of what we're supervising in Beltrami County. And then when you think about violations and the outcomes for violations, this is a lot of data here. But the high points are that when you look at the five-year average of violation reports, and remember, we supervise on a five-year average about 1,000 people. We were submitting roughly about 715 violation reports a year for that population. And so when it's broken down by supervising location on that top right, so that brown bar at the top is your intensive supervised release violations. And this is what's interesting to me. If you look at 2021, I think they had roughly 23 people under supervision on January 1st of that year. And yet they had 52 violations submitted that year, which makes sense, right? You're supervising somebody at a high intensity, you're likely to catch a lot more of those violations as well. And then the bulk of those in the middle, those light blue colors, those are felony violations. And so the highest number of individuals we supervise are felons. So it would make sense that that's where you're going to see the highest number of your violations. And then the graph at the bottom really just looks at 75% of our violations were submitted on individuals that were considered high or medium risk, which again makes sense. And about just under, just over rather, 20% were submitted on low-risk individuals. And then discharge information. So I want to be careful when we talk about discharges because people are discharged for a whole variety of reasons. But when you look at the outcomes, you'll see successful. And in 2024, you'll see 368 individuals were successfully discharged. That doesn't mean they didn't have violations during their term of supervision. It simply means that at the end of their supervision, when they either expired or were discharged early, that they were doing well, stable housing, employment, and they were in compliance with their conditions of supervision. And those that were unsuccessful, of course, are represented in those dark blue lines. And that typically is going to mean that they executed a sentence, they went to prison, they served their local jail time, those kinds of things. And then when you look at revocation information. Again, if you look at the bottom left graph, you'll see we had in 2020, there were 607 individuals. And of those 607, most, 551, for example, were probation clients. And 56 were supervised release clients. So what I take from that, if I'm all of you, is a good thing that most of our clients are probation clients and not individuals coming out of prison. And then if you look at the top right, those are outcomes. And so most often, whether it's probation or supervised release, they typically have multiple chances at supervision. So you might see, so there was 490 cases that were not revoked despite our office submitting a violation. And that could be for a variety of reasons. We don't always ask for every case to be revoked. But of that year, 72 cases were revoked and 490 were either reinstated or what we would call restructured on supervision. So basically giving them additional chances to be compliant. And then below, we broke out ISR. So you can see kind of the difference between our intensive supervised release work and our regular adult probation parole work. And then to kind of get you out of the stats, if you're not a stats person. These are all the different projects that we collaborate with. Our local stakeholders within the criminal justice system and also within our community. So the duly involved youth project is a collaboration with the county attorney's office, with Beltrami County Health and Human Services, and also with Red Lake and Leech Lake Child Protection. We have a number of specialty courts in Beltrami County. We have a domestic violence court, a DWI court and a drug court. And all of those specialty courts take a lot of time, energy, collaboration with all of our county stakeholders, criminal justice stakeholders, and a lot of our treatment facilities in our area as well. We also have a housing grant with the HRA. And we have two agents that provide enhanced sex offender supervision. And they collaborate with Core Psychological Services who comes to Beltrami County to offer sex offender treatment programs. And our staff sit in those sex offender treatment programs with the offenders and with the treatment staff. So that there's no splitting, there's no manipulating, everybody knows the same information and then we can make decisions about what needs to happen from there as a team. We also have ISR leased housing. And what that means is Department of Corrections leases rental property in Beltrami County so that individuals coming out of prison that are our highest risk have a place to land. Because we know that if they are homeless, it increases recidivism. And so we also want to know where they are. And so we provide housing for a limited period of time till they can get out and get on their feet. We also offer a grant to the Northwest Indian Community Development Center in the amount of $250,000 a year to provide reentry services for individuals coming out of prison and also our probation clients too. And what you guys will like to know is DOC also pays the county a lease. And as of fiscal year 26, it will actually be just above $72,000 a year. So that's a benefit for the county as well. And so just to give you a quick picture of all of the staff that we have here. The staff that are highlighted in yellow are multi-county or shared staff. So for example, my time is highlighted because I also spend time in Clearwater County as a supervisor. And Cody Underdahl supervises the northern half of the state for intensive supervised release. And so his support staff and those team of agents are the team that provides ISR supervision to Beltrami County. They also provide it basically in the north east side. So they've got, you know, Grand Rapids, Hubbard, Itasca, Clearwater, Beltrami, kind of all that that east side of things. And then the rest of the agents, of course, are providing different services depending upon their caseload. And so in all total, if we're talking about FTEs, you've got about 1.3 supervisors, 17 agents and four support staff that are dedicated to Beltrami County. And the big thing is, what do you pay for that? My budget for this year is proposed to be about $380,000 for the year. Minus the $72,000 I'm going to give you back for the lease is really quite inexpensive for the number of staff that you receive and the services. So just wanted to point that out. The other thing I would say is the state does provide three of the four cars that we have for agents to get out in the field and do their supervision and home visits and all of that. We also provide body armor, phones, the computers, all the IT and all the HR functions. So hiring, firing, discipline, all of that kind of stuff. And the state takes on all the liability for the county for whatever our agents do or don't do as well. So that is all I have unless you guys have questions or if it's more detailed. Like I said, you can certainly feel free to reach out and schedule some time.
Commissioner Winger?
I have one. Gotten some phone calls from some family members of people who are, were arrested for the similar charges they'd had before. They were on probation. And they were out again in a day or two and the families are really frustrated because they want them to get some, some kind of something to stop them from continuing. Who should they be calling? Who could, who should I tell them to call?
They can certainly call me directly.
Okay.
The hard part, of course, is as you know, that for example, last night I made an arrest at 3:30 this morning. My bet is that person's out today. So it's kind of once they go to court, it's out of our hands and it's up to the judges to make those decisions. And in supervised release cases, of course, it's up to the hearings and release unit. But I can certainly take those calls. I don't mind having that conversation. And what I would say is the calls that I have typically gotten are really from family members who have loved ones that are addicted. And they are terrified they're going to overdose and die. And in some cases really want them to be in jail because it's where they know they're safe, which is kind of sad.
Probably getting the same phone calls from the same people.
I would bet so too. But certainly you can give them my number.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Trish. That was very informative.
Thank you.
Right. We'll move on to the behavioral health task force update. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I think I'm going to start by saying we call ourselves a task force. But we could just as easily be a work group or a collaborative or any other, any other number of names. I think what's important is it is a group of people that's been working together since this, the the initial, I'll kind of get into that. First of all, who's at the table? Right now, we have the sheriff's office. We have the police department. We have social services. We have a county commissioner. Scott Winger is is a member. We have the county attorney's office. We have Jim Akis from NAMI, which is the National Association for Mental illness, I believe. Jail administration is at the, is at the table. Sanford Health, probation. Trish, Trish is at the table with us there. ISD 31 has recently started attending with us. And red, from Red Lake, we have Selena Beasley. And then we have Mindy O'Brien coming from the Northwest Juvenile Center. This wrong way. There we go. So historic, the history of this, of our task force really started in back in 2016. Now, the current iteration is it started in 2019. But back in 2016, there was a group of us that got together. It wasn't that entire group that I just mentioned, but it was law enforcement, county attorney's office, myself. And at that time it was Becky Secor. And we had some local group home providers and Sanford Health. The reason that we got together is we had this, this circular action happening. An individual that was living in a community, whether they were at a group home or they were generally in a community, would be causing a ruckus. Law enforcement would be called, they'd get picked up, they would get taken to the, the Sanford emergency room. They would be having a mental health breakdown of some sort that turned into behavioral challenges. And then they'd be at the, at the at the emergency room. And we're looking at where do they go next? Do they go to jail? Sometimes they go to jail and sometimes they'd go back to the emergency room. Sometimes they'd go back to their, their group homes. And then they turn around and come back to the emergency room. And it was this circle that was going round and round. And none of the entities really, they're, everybody was frustrated with what each other was doing or what each other was not doing, or at least perceived to not be doing. So we got the group together. We sat down and kind of worked through some of these things. There continues to be an ebb and flow. Sometimes people don't like the way law enforcement responds. Sometimes they don't like the way the, the emergency room responds. Sometimes we don't like the way the group homes are maybe calling law enforcement and so on and so forth. But generally there, at least there's a spot for people to get together and talk through the challenges that we are, that we're seeing. So that started in 2016. Things did improve. Like I say, there continues to be a bit of an ebb and flow. But generally speaking, things are better because people are talking. And that's what this is really about. So in about 2017, 2018, myself and Sheriff Hodap were at a meeting in St. Paul. And some of these same things were being talked about. But it was really, the biggest thing that was being talked about at that meeting was the fact that our jails were becoming the largest mental health facilities in the state of Minnesota. So they're looking at how do you, where can you intervene? How can you stop the recidivism? Well, we started talking about the fact that we were already working on some of these issues. We were at the forefront of it. That caught the attention of Senator Goodwin, who was a senator from southern Minnesota. I think some of you, I think, Tim, you were probably on the board at the time. And I'm not sure who else may have been at that time. But Senator Goodwin came up at the invite of Sheriff Hodap to Beltrami County to sit down with us and kind of walk through, what are we doing here? What are the challenges? And she ended up going and going to the legislature requesting money for Beltrami County. And that ended up being the Prime West Center that is over on the Sanford, on the Sanford complex over there. And that was the first major mental health program that we, residential program that was brought here into Beltrami County. That's aside from the CBHH, which has been here for many years. So we were working on these, on these cycling, these people cycling through the systems and program. And we were ahead of the game. We got these, these dollars. The facility was built. We then continued working on other issues, other things forward here. So the process is collaboration. We identified the issues. We identified possible solutions. We look at financial viability, tend to create a plan, try and execute the plan. The key is try because oftentimes it has to do with the money that is or is not available from the legislature. Then we hopefully come up with a solution and we celebrate our solution, move on to the next issue. So some of the things that have been brought forward, some of the ideas that started in this group was the ACT team, which is the community treatment. Can't remember the first. A sort of community treatment. So what that is, is when you have a individual who has a number of different challenges and issues. The ACT team, they get, they get referred to the ACT team. And then the ACT team kind of surrounds them with services and programs. Those services and programs might be therapy and counseling, might be med management, might be regular medical issues that they have, could be SUD. There's a case manager that might be working on housing issues with them. So they, they really get surrounded with wraparound services. It's a great program. Sanford started that. I think that one started back in 18 or 19 and has been going since then. It's a wonderful program. We're, we're very lucky to have it. It's also a program that is well thought of. It is, it's a program that in many communities, they have these same types of things. We didn't have it here. Then we put together the RECEPT program, which you are well aware of. We've talked about that on many occasions. Then more recently, back in 23, the New Crisis Center and Empath was opened by Sanford. So that was another thing that was talked about through this, through this task force and worked on through this task force. Some of the things that have happened is we've, we've come up with ideas. And then Sanford, when I, I talk about Sanford in this because they've been the biggest player outside of county and state agencies. The reason they've been the biggest players is because they have more money. They're the biggest, they're the biggest healthcare provider in northwest Minnesota, at least that I'm aware of. So they're able to access funding. We come up with an idea, they, they come up with rendition, with architectures, renditions, and then there we happened to hear about money coming down the pipe from the legislature. And you already had a project ready that was able to go forward with that. So that's how we ended up getting the, the Empath and the Crisis, the Current Crisis Center, which also is a psychiatric, a full psychiatric hospital now, shorter term, but it is a psychiatric hospital. Now in 23, the Youth Act was put forward by, by Sanford. That is now, it's under the CCBHC. So it's not called Youth Act anymore, but it's the same concept where you have services surrounding the individual doing wraparound services and programs. And then more recently, back in, in 24, the Amber Program, which we've been, which has been worked on and talked about for several years, has finally started functioning at the end of 24. So those are the things that we've done throughout the past. Then as we look to the future, we're looking now towards, there's always going to be mental health issues. We need to look, adult mental health issues that we need to look at and continue addressing and continue providing programming and searching for new ideas because those things are still out there. But children's mental health is coming to the forefront right now. One of the things that we're looking at is the age of One of the things that we're looking at is the age of delinquency. That is going to be changing next year. And so children under the age of thirteen are not going to be able to be charged, are not going to be able to be charged with delinquency, delinquent behaviors. They'll, they still may have those behaviors, but they're not going to be charged criminally for that. So when those kids who have sometimes assaultive behavior, sometimes there might be sexually assaultive behavior, different things like that, when they come to us, what are we going to be able to do about that? Because they can't now go to Northwest Juvenile Center. They're not going to be able to go to most of the facilities that we currently use for housing these individuals. My concern is they're going to end up in our county buildings because we're not going to have programs available for them. That being said, one of the things we're working on, that's why Mindy O'Brien from Northwest is talking with us, she's, she is open to coming up with different ideas, not at the center, because they're not going to be able to be at the center. But there might be some options available with the support of, of Mindy and Northwest to provide some services and programs there. We would likely be reaching out to Evergreen. We'd be doing a number of different things to try and address this issue as we, as we move it forward. The other thing, of course, is I don't suspect the legislature is going to be giving us hundreds of millions of dollars this year. I worry that we're going to be looking at how do we provide services with less. We'll be addressing these types of things in this as well. And are there other entities, other agencies that can help support our, our local residents as they are suffering from mental health issues? And then the other thing that, that we're also looking at, working on is the eleven fifteen waiver, which I think we've talked about a little bit before. That is where it would allow us to provide, would allow the county to be, would allow for M A to, services to be delivered in the jail. So there might be some mental health programming available. There might be some S U D programming available that would be paid for by M A, which would, of course, support our, our county functions as well. In conclusion, while there, while there continues to be a great need for mental health services here in our community, the collaborative efforts between all the parties involved, and, and all the parties involved with our mental health task force has made, has made a difference. We've created services. We continue to look towards the future and what services may be necessary. I think that this community and the collaboration that happens within this community is why we are able to get things done. We are not big enough to be Minneapolis-St. Paul and have all the services and programs that they have available, and we're not small enough to some, like some of our other neighbor, neighboring counties that may or may not have some of the same issues we do. So we need to collaborate. We need to work together to come up with solutions. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Jeff, is, are you, are we seeing an increase year after year after year in mental health issues? Or has it stabilized at all? Or do we have a handle on that?
We are seeing increases right now in our, in our commitments that we're doing. It's hard to speak to, I can speak to the highest end. And I, I probably could have pulled numbers, but I believe we are up right now. We're going to be seeing, if things continue the way they have through the end of the year, we will likely see the highest number of commitments than we've ever had. I can also tell you that our, our child protection programming and child protection investigations, last month, we tied a record for the highest number of investigations and interventions that we've ever had, had fifty. We're well on our way this month doing the same. So those numbers are all rising. I think the stressors that we are seeing in our community are, are causing a lot of different things to happen. It's, it's causing mental health issues. It is causing our, the parents in our community to be more challenged. I think we're seeing a lot of different things going on that are contributing to it.
So when you talk about stressors, what are the stressors that you're talking about?
I think financial. I think frankly, what we see in, in the frustrations regarding some of the political challenges from both ends of the spectrum and the stresses that sometimes happen when, when people are angry, there seems to be a more anger out there on all sides. So I think all those things contribute to it. The instability across the world, I think, contribute to it. I think there's so many contributing factors. And that's, that's the challenge is how do we, how do we help people work through these challenges? I would also say that the S U D issues that we have been dealing with, and that substance use disorder that we've been dealing with for the past twenty years, they all come home to roost. When you see those things happening over the years, those children that may have been affected many years ago are now young adults. And those are, those are precipitating factors, I think, as well.
So your group, your collaborative, your task force, do you look at, instead of just looking at ways to treat the problems, is there, do you work on how, how do we eliminate some of these problems so that it reduces?
We, well, that's part of the reason that we have ISD thirty-one at the table now, because if we can get to kids and we can serve children, the hope is we won't have to serve them as adults. So we, we, we're trying. The, the challenge is money is short all across, you know, as we all are well aware, and we're serving as well as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, you mentioned the Medicaid?
Yes.
And is medical assistance covered by Medicaid?
It, yes, they're all kind of one in the same. One is, one, Medicaid, I believe, is a federal program. Medical assistance is a program run by the states. I would probably look to Anne for that. That's the state's iteration of, of Medicaid.
Well, I was just kind of curious, because with a lot of uncertainty, you know, from the federal government and the state government when it comes to health insurance, are we going to be impacted by any cuts to Medicaid or Medicare or anything like that?
I don't think we know that yet. I'm likely not the right person to ask that question of. That would probably be, Kurt would have a better, would have a better understanding of that and where we're at with that. Jump in for a second?
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Commissioner, as, as Jeff had mentioned, we're still waiting to see actually what happens at the federal level to know how those cuts affect. We still haven't gotten some of the final results from the state legislature, either in regards to where the state medical assistance, what it can and cannot fund. So we're still kind of on hold, awaiting that to, to be able to really see how or what those effects are to our citizens here within Beltrami County.
So are, are there any plans in place for if or when these cuts happen?
We are, we are staying in contact with the state. And they have a leadership meeting to kind of, oh, they're helping the different counties. Well, providing a meeting and a forum to be able to talk about this and to see where we go. Again, it's, it's going to be a joint venture based off of what happens at the federal level between both the state and then how it's implemented here at the county.
Uh, Mr. Chair, so with the eleven fifteen waiver, which is covering medical assistance, and if there's some sort of Medicaid, Medicaid part to it, how would that affect the waiver?
Well, fir- first of all, the, the eleven fifteen waiver is something that the state had to request from the federal government. That was granted, but it is granted, their, the state was looking for five localities as partners. Now, if that has all come out yet, I'm not sure if their requests for that have come out. I thought they had, but I'm, it's, some of the stuff is coming from the states a little fuzzy right now. But so when they, when they find these pilots, they'll set up these pilots and see how things go with it. They'll look at what the costs are. They'll see what the, what the outcomes are and see whether or not something can be pushed out statewide. That's my understanding of it.
Uh, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Jeff? Thanks for the update, Jeff.
You bet. Thank you.
Next up, we've got the twenty twenty-five allocation of opioid settlement dollars to discuss.
You ready? All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Amy Bowles, your Public Health Director and Community Health Services Administrator. In January twenty twenty-five, an RFP was released for the intent of allowing community agencies in Beltrami County to apply for Beltrami County opiate settlement funds. The funds are awarded on a yearly basis to support the work of organizations and to help expand or improve services provided throughout Beltrami County. The Opiate Steering Committee is recommending funding distributed to the applicant, applicants listed in Exhibit Eight. However, before I move on into the recommendation portion, I would like to remind the board that on February eighteenth, I came before you to present our year-to-date spending report. During that presentation, I updated this board on the account balance based on the monies received and money spent. In addition, we reviewed the allocated funds, investing funds, state required remediation uses. And since that update, we have received and spent additional funding. So our current balance on May first was seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. So with that update, I'd like to turn your attention to Exhibit Eight. Exhibit Eight is the Opiate Steering Committee's recommendation that the Beltrami County Commissioners approve distribution up to seventy thousand fifty dollars of opiate settlement dollars to support the RFP applicants. Do we, do you need me to read off those and review those with you, or do you have any questions about the Exhibit Eight?
Mr. Carlson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Amy, how many applicants were there total?
This round, we had nine.
Had nine, okay. And what what criteria did the committee use to disqualify someone that had put in a request for some money? Was there anything particular that caught the attention of the, of the committee to say, nah, that we're not, that's not going to work, or?
Yep, we had a scoring criteria. So applicants could score up to a hundred points on their application on the, meeting the remediation uses, following the, all of the necessary forms that we requested them to fill out. So asking questions like, how do you plan to use this funding? What is your project for? What's the history of your organization? We didn't score individuals for requesting money last time, but we did make note of that when we were reviewing that process of the nine applicants. Two applicants were recipients of funding from twenty twenty-four's allocation.
So is there any services provided by Beltrami County that would qualify to take advantage of some of these dollars?
And so we do. If you remember, when we first came before you as a steering committee with our recommendation to the board, we set a budget of a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Because what we did is, we don't know how much money we are actually going to get over the course of eighteen years. It is assumed that we will get two point eight million dollars. If you take that two point eight divided by the eighteen years, on average, we would get about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And so we made that our ballpark budget. And seventy thousand stays within county services, and seventy thousand is distributed out into community services through the RFP process.
I appreciate the reminder. I know that we've been through this before, but it's like, ah, how do we, it's hard to remember.
Hopefully, that was a gentle rate.
Is there, is there, is there laws, is there some directives in the appropriation of that money that it has to be? Could a hundred percent go to the county? Is that a possibility?
Board of Commissioners decided to do, we sure could do that. The recommendation in the, the M O U from the state is to work with law enforcement, public health, and then community municipalities to try and determine like best use to bring partners to the table. And so that's why we formed the Steering Committee with two components. We have one component that we meet every month. It's the county-based employee committee. And then once every other month, the community members join us, and that's where we have nine individuals working within our community, whether they're working in harm reduction, they're working in prevention services, they're a, they have lived experiences. They're working in the criminal justice system or any of the different areas that are supported through the mediation, remediation uses.
So the reason for my question is that with, given, given the budget crisis that we're going to be facing this year with the reduction in state funding and cost shifts, I'm just wondering if, if this isn't some, in, in some way that could be helpful for the county if we weren't distributing outside the county?
It's a, it's a valid question. It's a valid question. There, there is no doubt in my mind that if the county chose to allocate the funds to programs and services that meet the remediation uses of the state's M O U, it would benefit county funding. I would ask the Commissioners to consider the unintended consequences of not working with community partners that already struggle just as much, if not more, than the county does. So because, for example, while we have a health and human service agency of a hundred and sixty employees, rough estimate, right? We are funding, we are recommending to fund Face It Together, which is a much smaller organization, but reaches sometimes just as many people as we do in a different, or not as many people, but reaches people in a different capacity than we have the ability to do. So I would look at it as we are distributing money to county services, but in a different way in which the county doesn't have the ability to do so.
And, and then final, one final question, thank you, Mr. Chair, is I, I see that for most of the requests, they were reduced. And one was awarded a hundred percent, and I, it, it just seems like how does someone get a hundred percent and get a third? You know, that just seems, I don't know if that seems pretty fair.
So we base the funding off of what they put in their budget request. So if somebody requested funding for something that wasn't a remediation use, then we took that funding, that amount out of their, the proposal that we're submitting to you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Not, not a question, but I just want to remind the board that both the County Employee Committee and the Citizen Committee do a lot of great work when it comes to reviewing these applications. I know that these applications aren't just a, a one-page, you know, request. So they do their due diligence and, and have, you know, tough conversations and discussions about how to, you know, fairly distribute, you know, these, this funding. You know, I, I I agree, you know, with, with Commissioner Carlson, that maybe, you know, it would be nice if, if the county could, you know, utilize the entire hundred forty thousand, but I, I understand that these outside organizations are also having a tough time financially. And, you know, the county isn't the only ones that were suffering, you know, from this opioid crisis that we were, we're experiencing. And I think, you know, if we were to, to hoard the money entirely for the county, that, that wouldn't look good in the community. I can imagine, you know, we'd have this, our boardroom, you know, full with, with concerned citizens because the opioid crisis knows no boundaries. It affected everybody, not just, you know, our, our county, but, you know, the organizations as well. So I just want to, you know, commend the committees for, for their work and their due diligence on, on this process. So I just want to, you know, commend the committees for their work and their due diligence on this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sumner. Amy, I'm listening to Commissioner Carlson and Commissioner Sumner. I can see both sides of it. I do find it with the amount of money that this is that we, I mean, for, you know, a lot less money than this on the Community Development Fund, we, we all go through and, and review all of the information that's been submitted, all the RFPs, if you will. And, and we, each commissioner puts in their, their two cents, so to speak, as to where that money should be allocated. And it just seems like we could do the same thing with this and make a determination based on what we feel the need is as a county board versus having the separate committee go through it. I think that, I don't know, last year was the first year that they received any money, these outside agencies, correct? So it's not like they should be counting on, on this for their, their budget or their funding with it being brand new last year. So I, I think that it's something that should be up for discussion, given the circumstances that we're getting put in under with the budget this year. And to Commissioner Sumner's point, you know, there could be people that would be upset from us not funding a particular agency or agencies outside the county, but there are going to be a lot of people upset with the tax increase that they're going to see. And, you know, yeah, it's not a lot, but this, that $70,000, you know, that's close to, that's a quarter or over a quarter of a percent tax increase. So that's my thoughts. Anybody else have anything?
So just a suggestion, but since the board had already approved and that you can't undo what you approved, but approved of the 140 per year for our budget and the 70 to be distributed once a year to the community, and they already put forth the effort and a lot of resources went into the individuals' time of putting forth the application. Maybe considering the unspent allocated money if there's room for, you know, I did mention that at the beginning of my presentation that we do have a pretty good budget, a pretty good balance. And so maybe moving forward, we want to reconsider. The board might want to think about like how the funding as it comes in, how that might be allocated in the direction that you recommended, Commissioner Gass.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a recommendation. It's just a matter of the, the Budget Committee this year. We don't know for sure what situation we're going to be in, but every, every, we're telling our department heads to be prepared, basically, and to start looking for revenue sources as well as cuts and so on, because we know it's not going to be good. And I see this as a potential revenue source. You know, it's, everybody's going to feel pain, I think, in the budget this year. So I just echo what Commissioner Carlson was saying. All right. Thank you, Amy.
So before the board, I've presented a proposal that would either need to be brought to the consent agenda or to
It's on the consent agenda, correct, currently, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on there.
That's all I had.
But however, Mr. Chair, I'm going to, when we get to that item, I'm going to ask that to be removed to the regular agenda.
Okay.
So you need me to hit no?
That's good.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Yep. All right, brings us to quarterly, quarterly Health and Human Services Client Supports. And Ann is coming up for that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ann Lynn, South Director of Health and Human Services. Thank you for listening today. We want to bring forward some support stories that Health and Human Services provides to our community members on a daily basis. We had planned to do this quarterly, and so this is our second quarter report to the board. And we have three of our leadership staff here today to share three stories with you. So first, I'm going to call up Kurt Anderson, our Economic Assistance Division Director. Thank you.
Welcome, Kurt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. And Commissioner Sumner, you might have kind of already preempted a little bit as far as what my support story is going to be about, because it's going to be about medical assistance. The support story I will be providing you today highlights the importance really of your Minture Call Center and how it is able to assist in answering questions for clients and potentially open up programs that our county residents are eligible for. We received permission to use the following story as long as we didn't identify the client by name. So I just wanted to preface that upfront. This county resident had to undergo treatment for cancer. When the individual was first treated, they did not get any referral to medical assistance from any of the providers that they were being seen by. So as you can imagine, going through a cancer-type treatment, even if you have regular insurance or employer-based insurance, there is going to be bills that have to be paid out of pocket. Unfortunately, when you are undergoing cancer treatment, if you're worried about the bills, you're not really focused on healing quite as much as you're trying to find a way to pay those bills, and that causes a high amount of stress. Now, this resident ended up actually receiving what is called our Medical Assistance for Breast or Cervical Cancer coverage, because on the second go-around, there was a call to the county. And this time, our Minture teammate Robbie Kendall was able to explain that they may be eligible for this program, Medical Assistance for Breast or Cervical Cancer, and kind of helped explain the application process. Now, what I, what I think is important about this program, and it's, and it's not a program that is maybe well-known or publicized, is that there is no, you know, traditionally, this client would not be eligible for medical assistance due to their income and employer healthcare coverage. However, this program has no income or asset limits to be eligible for it. To be eligible for this program, the person must be screened by the Minnesota Department of Health Sage Screening Program or by the American Indian Cancer Foundation Screen Our Circle Program. They also need to be in treatment of further diagnostic services for breast or cervical cancer, be 64 years of age or younger, and have no insurance coverage for this particular treatment, and of course, be a U.S. citizen and Minnesota resident. So now, this resident is receiving that coverage. They did get some help, again, with the application process through our Beltrami County Healthcare teammate, Steph Lauterball. And they are receiving no-cost treatment for their cancer for the length of their treatment through this program. This is providing a massive relief to their stress level and allowing them to focus really on healing versus medical bills. So thank you for the opportunity to highlight the support services that is provided by your Economic Assistance Team, Commissioners.
Anybody have any questions for Kurt? Thank you, Kurt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Amy Bowles, your Public Health Director. Thank you for the opportunity to share a brief story that highlights the vital role of our WIC services in protecting the health of our youngest residents. And I also have changed, omitted names, and I'm just using him as a gender preference in making the ease of reading my staff's story. So a nine-month-old infant was brought into the WIC clinic by his mother for a routine scheduled appointment. As part of a standard WIC protocol, he was weighed, measured, and had a hemoglobin screening, a simple but crucial check that helps identify iron deficiency anemia early. His hemoglobin level came back critically low, less than eight. For context, we aim for a minimum of a hemoglobin of 11, to be considered within a healthy range. His only source of nutrition at the time was breast milk, and his mom had not yet introduced solid foods that contained dietary iron. Immediately, our WIC Nutrition Educator Sheila provided tailored education to the mother. She explained the importance of iron-rich foods at this low age, how infants' nutritional needs change as they grow, and the interaction between calcium and iron absorption. And then she recommended a healthy feeding schedule that still included breastfeeding, but with an emphasis on introducing solids. Due to the severity of the anemia, our clinic properly notified the children's pediatric provider. A lab was drawn for a follow-up to, to confirm the need for medical intervention. And then the child began both oral iron supplements and iron infusions. It's important to note, at most pediatric clinics, hemoglobins are not routinely checked until a child is 12 months old. Without the WIC screening, this case of severe anemia might have gone undetected for several more months, potentially resulting in long-term developmental impacts. At his one-year WIC follow-up, his hemoglobin had returned to a healthy range. His mother was now incorporating iron-rich foods into every meal and snack, and he was continuing with supplements. By 18 months, he was thriving. He had weaned from breastfeeding and had a good appetite, and his iron levels remained within normal limits. He now receives routine venous draws every six weeks to monitor his progress. This story is just one example, but it underscores the critical role of WIC in early detection, intervention, and parent education. It also highlights the importance of continued investment in the public health programs that work in coordination with pediatric providers to fill gaps and prevent avoidable health risks at our youngest and most vulnerable populations. Our team thanks you for your continued support of the WIC program.
Amy, so was the, was the mother also, was she tested then to see what her hemoglobin was?
That I didn't ask.
Yeah, I would, because I would think it would be logical that she probably was deficient as well if she wasn't able to give breast milk, but that had, I'm not a doctor, obviously, but I would, I would just, you know, question whether or not she was able to be helped in that way as well.
Yeah, I don't know if they tested to see if it was like a genetic thing or if it was just simply related to the child wasn't getting enough iron in his diet. Because the mom consuming food, she may have been getting enough iron.
Yeah.
Yeah, good question, though.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Josh Burnham. I'm the Finance Manager at Health and Human Services. I was asked to bring a support story regarding our non-emergency medical transportation program. And I, this, this position is co-managed by me and Kurt. So we work very diligently to help clients be able to get to medical transportation or get transportation arranged so they can get to their medical appointments. The success story I wanted to share involves us at Health and Human Services and Prime West. So just to take a step back, as prior to '24, we used to set up all transportation for our clients to get to these medical appointments. In '24, Prime West stepped in and said, hey, how can we support our clients and how can we do a better job of that? There's been some challenges on their behalf, but as we continue to work forward, we as the county have always partnered with Prime West as much as we possibly can. Prime West was dealing with some cost-effectiveness of how to get these people to their medical appointments and how they could do it more cost-effectively. We've partnered with them to help give them access to the Paul Bunyan Transit bus and be able to help with that, extremely cost-effective at $1.50 per ride. We've also partnered with them to help get volunteer drivers to help pick up clients at their houses and bring them to their appointments. One success story, a just, a support story I wanted to share is we had a client that, so we generally require a five-day notice for medical appointments. That's why it's not emergency medical transportation. We often have clients that are waiting for different specialized treatment, that they get a call from the doctor three days in advance, and it kind of doesn't fit within our criteria. But we work our butts off to be able to help those clients be able to get to those medical appointments. One success story is, is we had a person that was on Prime West that was in dire need to get to a, an eye procedure that was extremely critical for her to maintain vision in her eye. Prime West was unable to find a driver that was able to, to get this, to get this person to their appointment. Within three days, they contacted us and said, hey, we don't have anyone. Can you, can you help us out? Christina, our non-emergency medical transportation specialist, worked many, many calls with a provider with Paul Bunyan Transit to get a volunteer driver lined up. Our volunteer drivers are not supposed to assist people from the car to the actual door. That's against the regulations there. She worked directly with the provider and said, hey, we can get this person here, but we're going to need somebody from your provider, from you guys, to come out, assist that client to the appointment, and then also assist them back to the car when the appointment's done. I just really believe in my heart that that was above and beyond what we were required to do, but we were able to do it. We were able to get the individual to their medical appointment, and it was just a really big success story for that client, because they were able to go through that procedure and now is going to be able to maintain vision within her eye because of all of that. So it's a partnership we continue to work with, Prime West, very closely with, and try to provide the most cost-effective options for both Prime West and for ourselves as the county to be reimbursed from the state and federal government for these rides as well.
Josh, was that a local eye appointment, or was it Fargo or somewhere, or, you know?
I believe it was a local eye appointment, but I believe the person did live up in Black Duck. So it was a bit of a, a distance, I guess, to travel for someone.
Right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Josh? No? Great. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, thank you guys very much.
I just want to thank the Commissioners for listening. This is our day-to-day, and we have many, many more examples of how we support the community, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ann. Highway Project Grant Updates. Bruce is on deck. I think you got the next several here.
Yeah, I got a fluid topics and decisions for you guys today. I'm going to give you the good stuff first.
Okay.
The Beltrami County recently received two grants. The first one is for our project on Casade 20, North Side of the Lake. It's an existing project that we've got going underway. We received a State Park Road Account Grant of $375,000. That specific grant is for access to public recreational areas. And so being at the end of this project is the Bemidji State Park. We were eligible, applied, and got some funding for it. So we got some money to go towards that project. And that project now is just about two-thirds of the way funded with grant dollars. We estimate that project to be about $3 million. Our cost with this $375 and $1.5 million and our local road improvement program, we're moving towards getting that project mostly funded. Now, the second grant that we recently received is funding for another bike trail. This would be Phase Three of the bike trail. Phase One, the city is conducting, constructing next year from in-town out to Jefferson. Phase Two would be from Jefferson out to the high school. And then this would be Phase Three, from the high school to Gene Dillon. And so that would be a nice wrap-up to that, that project, if we can, when we get that one completed.
And that was 100% funded, correct?
And that is $770,000 for 100% funding for that project. So it's a very similar to Phase Two. There's those two grant options out there. One is AT, Active Transportation, which is what's funding Phase Two. This is the other pot of money that's 100% funding, and this is the Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Grant. Now, that project, that project is, you know, that would be a next-year project. All right, on to the next item. I got three kind of similar items here. The first one is some excess right away along 30. Back in 1986, Casade 30 was relocated from along the lake to where its current location is right now. During that process, the county bought a large parcel that the new road was going to go through, the existing road. And in this location here, there's some excess property from that larger parcel that we were looking at, what we could do with it, and kind of far as divesting or getting rid of it. The Land Committee, and NRM, and the Highway Department, we've been working on on divesting of this property. When we looked at it, we thought the best use would be to grant this right away, or sorry, put this right away with the existing platted lots alongside the lake. So we would combine, split this parcel up and combine them with those, those platted lots. Had a meeting with those landowners. They were interested, supportive of it. We told them that there would be a cost to this property. Initially, we were thinking that it would be the costs of, the big costs of surveying, the cost of surveying, and then there's a bunch of fees to divide and combine. And anyways, there's a bunch of costs that were with that. They were supportive, so we went ahead and got the certificate of survey done to come up with those parcels. And then now it's here in front of the county board to make sure that we want to proceed with that divestment. However, even since I drafted this agenda bill and putting that resolution together, However, even since I drafted this agenda bill and putting that resolution together, there were a few things that I wanted to, I guess, clarify and make sure that we were following the right process. Checked with the county attorney and also with the county assessor. With the attorney, was making sure we're using the right process. For counties, there's a statute that covers acquiring and getting rid of assets, so real estate. The second option is for roads, you can vacate or revoke it to a township. But so those were really the two processes. When we started this, we were thinking it was more like a road vacation. We'd be granting it to the neighboring landowners, but we're going to require them to pay the costs. However, the proper statute is the one where we are selling the property. That is actually what's in that resolution. So that part is correct, but there are a couple of other things that we would need to update with this draft resolution if the board wants to move ahead with it someday. One is the price. That statute says that there's a minimum price that you have to set. And that's based on county assessor. And so I have asked Caleb to look at that and he's given me what the prices would be. So that would be one thing that would be changed in this draft resolution. And the other would be mineral rights. And that statute says that the county needs to keep mineral rights on that property. If we've got them, we need to keep them. So that was another small point that we would change. But I guess initially, this isn't for the board decision today. But I guess I wanted some direction if we should continue with, on this process and bring it forward to the board for a decision later.
Any questions or comments for, for Bruce or generally in favor of it? Get any head nods?
Well, Mr. Chair, I believe we've already got some money into some surveying and some other things. So I guess it would behoove us to get some money back. And so that would be selling, getting rid of it, and whichever matters, the right way to do it.
Yeah, I would be in favor of it. Looks like, looks like we've got consensus to move forward with it. The additional, I would assume the costs are going to go up for the landowners from what they showed in this resolution. And hopefully they will still be agreeable to whatever the cost ends up being by statute.
Yeah, it's, you know, one's eight hundred higher, another one's thirteen hundred higher. But I mean, they are, that's the value of it, but yeah, it's a fair amount that it would be going up.
Yeah, and that's.
If you read through that resolution,
Yep.
the, the process, when we were talking about doing this and even talking with the landowners, we're going to be splitting this parcel up. In order to do that, each one of those parcels has to be acquired. We cannot have one of those to not be acquired. So if a landowner says, no, I don't want that, I'm not going to pay this dollar amount. The next step is the two neighboring landowners would be offered that. So then, you know, it would connect into theirs. So again, so it could be combined. If they say no, then the whole thing drops. Because again, we cannot create one of those small, non-conforming parcels out there. And so they're aware of that. And so that, again, that process kind of stands.
Is that, is that actually separate landowners right there in that area?
There.
That's not the Charbonneau property?
Correct.
Okay.
There was like six, six, seven landowners there.
Okay. So looks like move forward with that one and come back to us when you have everything, all the ducks in a row.
Okay. The next one, that one got more complicated now too, compared to what I turned in last week. So this, again, same parcel that was bought when the road was relocated in nineteen eighty-six. This was part of that larger parcel that was bought. However, back in two thousand and seven, the county board approved a resolution to vacate a portion of this alongside, again, outside of the sixty-six that we wanted for the right-of-way. There's a long sliver in front of is White Birch Resort. And so the county board vacated it at that time. However, like we just talked about on that previous one, it is not, it is actually not proper to vacate a larger parcel like that since it was never, the vacation statute comes into play when you're getting rid of an old road. And this was never an old road. This is just more excess right-of-way. So it's excess property. So it should be, it should fall through the, the selling of property. However, again, the board back in two thousand and seven vacated it. The landowner has been using it ever since that time. I even checked, Caleb thought they'd been paying taxes on it since that time. The technicality is, is the board, the county never handed over the deed, the deed to that property. Again, we would have purchased that whole parcel. There was never a deed, quick claim deed or anything like that, that granted that property over to the, to that landlord. So we've kind of got a complicated mess here now with county board vacating, not providing the deed for the property. But then now finding we should probably follow a different statute. So rightfully, the property should be sold underneath the proper statute. But again, the landowner that thinks it's theirs and paying taxes on it, they're going to squawk if they're going to have to pay for it. So kind of looking for some direction on potentially how we might want to handle this one. I have not talked to Caleb about this one, about what that value is on this property. But again, it might be that, I don't know, two to four or five thousand dollars, I don't know.
There is another one with the same property owner that we're going to be talking about next.
That's the third topic, yeah.
And so that potentially, if we, I don't know, if it'd be legit for us to, to bundle them together as far as one payment or something like that, maybe. Because I think he is going to probably want the other piece. And so.
Yeah, maybe if I could jump into that, kind of combine the two topics. So again, same parcel bought in eighty-six. And however, this one has a township road on it. It is North Point Lane. And in nineteen eighty-nine, the county reverted the road to the township. But the same thing as the last discussion, we never handed over the property, never did a deed. And so the underlying owner is still the county, but it's been a township road since nineteen eighty-six. This one, where it gets potentially complicated, kind of like Commissioner Gosfick just brought up, is this is a really odd-shaped parcel. It is not a simple sixty-six-foot corridor or a hundred-foot corridor where the township road was. More shaped like a boot in my mind. And so it's kind of got some different widths. And so there is more or potentially better use of that property if it were to be granted to the neighboring landowner, which happens to be the same landowner as the previous topic, that White Birch Resort. They have, all of these two last topics are coming up recently because they're looking at changing their ownership status to a CIC and kind of making sure they got all their ducks in a row and found that these, these two areas were not, you know, properly deeded or, or in whose hands, they're still in the county's hands. So they were trying to help clear it up. We would like to help clear it up. And so again, kind of a similar situation where we need to hand over or should hand over property of the deed to that property. With this one here, this third one, we could give the township all of it. We give the township corridor a width and then sell the excess to the, to the neighboring landowner. Are a couple of the options there. So yeah, it, going back to this, the previous topic, maybe there's a buying value or a wish there too.
Commissioner Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a little problem with some of this stuff just because this all took place a long time ago. And now we're talking about charging them what these values are today when it really should have been done correctly in the first place, which sounds like our problem. And he's going to have to pay more because of that. And that doesn't seem right to me. I think the value should be based on what it was at the time. That's my opinion, you know, because that's when it should have taken place.
That's a good, very good point, you know, that if he would have, if it would have been done correctly, he would have paid whatever the plan value was forty years ago, which would have been a lot less. So, so that, that gives us some, some leg to stand on with regard to that sliver piece. And that, the other piece was never his property and that, and that actually does have some access. His road actually dips into that, I believe, or the road that he accesses down by the beach. And, you know, he actually had some, some buildings or like covered shed things or something that was actually encroaching on that property and, and so on. As, you know, because we discussed this on the, with the CIC thing and the Planning Commission. And so he does have interest in wanting that piece of property. Only two people that we could, or two things where we could either sell it to him, sell it to the township or, or give it to one or the other. But I don't think, especially in our financial position, that we should be giving anything away, you know, that we have the title ownership in. And so my opinion would be that we would get the, the, give the, the right-of-way for the road like was originally intended for the North Point Road and, and add to the township. And then offer up for bids to the, both the township and to the landowner for that piece of, that boot shape, as you called it, a piece of property between the township and the landowner to put it up for, for sealed bids and see who, who wants it more. Because I know the township does have interest in it as well. So I don't, other thoughts? Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I agree with Commissioner Winger with regard to the piece that was assumed to have.
On the north end up on thirty, I agree.
There's no way that we should charge any more than they could, that we should have charged to begin with. I don't, I think that's a, that's a no-brainer, but I, but I like your other idea on the, on the rest of it.
Right. Commissioner Sumner, what are your thoughts?
It's in your district. Yeah, I mean, I, I've heard from the neighboring landowner on multiple occasions. But I agree with that discussion that's been said. So have you talked to, to both the, the landowner and the township?
Through emails. And it's not directly with the landowner, but with a surveyor that's helping them. And yeah, they both expressed interest in it. The township would like to take the whole thing.
Right.
The selling part, that's, that's new as of again, last, late last week. So the landowner did realize there would be a cost or a price to it.
Yep.
So they, they know that they're not just being granted the property.
Right. And I just think out of fairness to the, to the township, that we should offer it up to, to both and, and whichever, whichever one wants it and put the, they'll, they should, we should be able to come up with a minimum value from the assessor's office and, and then just say, here's a minimum bid and see who wants to, to buy the property. Because I know the township has concerns and interests there as well. So maybe we let them work it out as a local government unit. That's my thought. I don't know if it'd even be legal for us to just, to just offer it to the, the landowner.
Yeah, but then I'm thinking, well, how much money does the, the township have, you know, compared to this, this individual?
I don't know that the township's super rich. I mean,
Are they at a disadvantage? I don't know.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know that it would be a, you know, a deal that would get probably too out of hand for money-wise unless personalities got in the, in the way. But I don't know, I think, I just, you know, I, I would defer to the county attorney to see what, you know, if he says that we, you know, legally have to offer it to both or if we, what we can do. Attorney Hanson, in this scenario that we're talking about right now, if we're talking about the potential of selling this excess right-of-way, we've got the, the landowner on one side and the, and the township on the other side. Are we required to offer it to both under like a sealed bid scenario? Or, or what's, what would legally be our, our options there?
I will get you the answer to that, Commissioner Godz. Like I do have one of my assistant county attorneys, Ms. Daly, working on this project. So I'm not as intimate with it as myself and aware of it. But Bruce, maybe we can email that question to her.
I think it, yeah, again, I don't have the statute in front of me, but I think it does say adjoining landowners.
I would, I would intuitively think so because.
That's what I thought.
It's, you know, we're talking the minimalist parcels. We're not talking large swath of land.
Right.
The correct boundaries and stuff. Usually the law allows, you know, like just straight up adjoining to just, you know, buy over the counter. But again, I just want the answer off the top of my head on that one.
We'd let us know on that and then.
We can break through that and bring it.
Yep.
Through you, the proper method.
Okay, great, thank you. Any, anything else on that, Bruce, or? So you got Clear as Mud on what you need to do?
Directing.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Bruce. All right, we, we do not have an administrator's report, but we don't have an administrator tonight. He's got a little PTO. Other business items, review the agenda. So you got the change on the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Or pulling item seven H, to we putting that to eleven A? Is that what you're calling it? Okay. Any other changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yep, Commissioner Gould?
I believe it's seven J and seven K, the recycling site items.
Public Works Highway Division, approval of the resolution and permit to enter into contract with MnDOT and the MOU with the, the city for the Fern Street. What about those?
What was the first one you said?
You said seven J. That's.
No, it'd be seven K and seven L.
Oh, okay. And what, you're wanting to, to move those also?
Yeah.
So seven K and seven L, we'll just call it B and C, or eleven B and eleven C. You got that, Scott? Okay. Any other changes? Hearing none, then we will recess until five o'clock. Got a longer-than-usual break.